All right, I'd like to call to order the February 6, 2024, meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We'll start with roll call. Michelle, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Granlund.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Maderas.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Petway.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Very excited tonight to start our meeting with a Highlander highlight. They are right in the front row. Very excited, we have Jalou Dorji with us who received a Best of Snow for the article Chinese Communist Party Attempts to Force Tibet Name Change. Do we have a, yep, Mr. Polly, if I can turn it over to you?
We can try, see how much the baby cries. Yes, Jalou, oh my gosh, Jalou joins Jack Israelson in the Best of Snow Award for the Heights Herald this year. I, hey Jalou, do you mind talking about it a bit? Because I clearly cannot write.
We appreciate what you're doing there, Mr. Polly. So Jalou, do you want to come on up to the table, right up here? Yeah.
There's a lot of y'all.
Yes, if there was ever a time to make a student nervous at a board meeting, this might be it. But Jalou, we have faith in you. We would love to hear about your experience and the article. Love to hear from you.
All right, well, let me just start off by thanking my parents, Mr. Polly, everyone at the Heights Herald, and I recognize most of these teachers here, so I grew up with y'all, so it's cool. Mr. Polly, great advisor, best one I could ask for, great support from my mom and dad, and everyone at the Heights Herald, whether it be editors or staff writers, everyone played a part in that, whether it be editing or just being part of the Heights Herald family. And yeah, and I also want to thank Columbia Heights School Board for allowing me to speak, allowing me to advocate for Tibet, which has been in an ongoing, I guess you could say, human rights, a lot of human rights violations are being committed by the communist regime of the CCP, and I'm happy that my advocacy in the article doesn't go in vain. And I'm happy that it's not only recognized in a community level, but also on a national level from Best of Snow. And yeah, it's a great honor. And yeah, being Tibetan, it was like just flowing, you know, because I had so much to say. And it sounds biased, but it's supposed to be a news piece, so I had to, you know, some of them, I had to keep, you know, my opinions from out of there. But it was, it was, I did my best and very happy when I got the text from Mr. Polly. He was like, yo, you just, you just got Best of Snow. I was like, yo. I was pretty excited. So that's all I want to say. Thank y'all very much.
Jalou, we're very proud of you. You obviously worked very hard and have a passion for what you do. So thank you for sharing that with us and for sharing it with everybody who has an opportunity to read that. And as you said, thank you to Mr. Polly and your advisors and those who provided you this opportunity and have supported you and encouraged you and taught you along the way. So we're glad that you have that opportunity. We have a certificate for you, and I'm going to have you come up. We're going to do the certificate. You're going to shake all the board's members' hands. There'll be a picture. Before we do that, real quick, did anybody on the board have anything they wanted to share with Jalou? Mary?
Per usual, I always have something to say, right? It was such a wonderful article, and I am immensely grateful that you took the time to explain to a bunch of people who probably don't know that much. I don't know that much about Tibet. I don't know, I know a little bit. Your article was so well-written, and it was so thoughtful in explaining it to people and also sharing the concern. And seeing this Best of Snow for your advocacy in this was, it was amazing and well, well-deserved. So please don't stop writing.
Anyone else? Jessica?
I just want to add my congratulations and tell you that too, as a board, we each got a copy of your article. And reading that and seeing the really prominent leaders and activists that you interviewed for that article was really, really impressive. So you should be very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have a certificate for you, so come on up. Great, thank you. Another round of applause for Jalou. Jalou, you are very welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. You are also very welcome to not. So we will not be offended. So you go whenever you choose. Next, we have our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On February 8th, this Thursday, there is a Flex Learning Day. On February 9th, Friday, there is no school for students. February 19th, there is no school, the district is closed. February 20th, at 5:30 PM, we will have our school board work session here in the community room. February 20th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, there'll be our regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next, we have our communication to the board. We have our citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the board, please make sure you fill out a blue card and get that to Stephanie. We will start. All right, we just had our citizen and employee representatives and comments. We, the board was addressed by a number of individuals who brought up the numbers of EL students and needs and support, class scheduling, Columbia Academy class sizes, support for local 7-10, the need for counselors, and overall class sizes. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the personnel report and the school board minutes from January 9th, special called the January 9th organizational, January 9th regular, the January 16th work session, the January 23rd meeting, and the January 29th Joint School District and City Council meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. Our acknowledgement of contributions is a resolution. So I will read that. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution, Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the school board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contribution detailed in the background below in the amount of $9,667. The background includes a donation of $1,200 was made to Valley View Music Program from the Solangu Foundation for New Risers for the music program. A donation of $1,500 was made to the Activities Department from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters to support the cheer squad. A donation of $6,000 was made to the Activities Department from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters to support the state tournament participations, participants. A donation of $30 was made to North Park School for Innovation from the Blackbaud Giving Fund. A donation of $500 was made to Valley View from Maureen Riley. A donation of $337 was made to the 2022-2023 CHHS Scholarship Fund from the K-12 PE Department for the Team PE Physical Education Scholarship. Value and Kind, a donation of professional quality xylophone and snare drum was made to Columbia Academy Music Department from Cindy Harper. Estimated value is $300. Total fiscal year 2023-2024 monetary contributions to date is $58,480.35. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Michelle?
So I know that, Mary usually steps in here, but I do just want to say thank you. I know that right now, we are having a hard time getting some funding in for our schools and things that our students need, and I just appreciate that. We are being helped in this way, and it means a lot, and it goes far for our students and our staff, I hope. So I really appreciate all of the donations. You know, we're a little over halfway through the year, and every time we read through these, I'm always amazed at how giving our community is. So I just wanted to show a little appreciation for that, say thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Perfect. Since it's a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes, Granlund.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Maderas.
Aye.
Poole.
Aye.
Petway.
Aye.
Thank you, resolution passes. Next, we have our discussion reports and information. We'll start with reports from members of the board, and we'll start with Julie.
Thank you. I did want to take a little bit of time here to discuss the treasurer's report. As you, many of you are probably aware that when I ran for office in 2023, one of my campaign promises to our community was that we ensure the district is financially or fiscally responsible and the finances are handled appropriately and transparently. As a certified public accountant and a certified internal auditor, this board decided I was well-suited to the role of treasurer, and I have gladly accepted that role. As a treasurer, I have asked many questions of Superintendent Stenbik and Director Hennickens about the financial reports provided to the board each month, and they have always been gracious and forthcoming with answers. Each month, I receive the treasurer's report from Director Hennickens. This includes a reconciliation of cash accounts and a listing of all disbursements that includes wires, vouchers, checks, and payroll, as well as summary of journal entries, accounting, sorry, accounting terminology. I select a sample of these expenditures, and Director Hennickens provides the supporting documentation for these transactions. I look at what I would consider unusual or things that I don't know about. I look at all kinds of transactions. I look at vouchers that are just paid to maybe a staff person who is getting reimbursed for mileage or for just various things. In, I just want to say that I do look at all of these expenses, and I look for several things. For the month of November, I requested the normal sample of expenditures, but I also requested the payroll registers, the bank statements, and detail of the journal entries. And when I receive all of these, I review for appropriate approvals. We have policies in place or procedures in place that say, you know, there's got to be two signatures on this, you know, from a standpoint that more staff is looking at it to make sure it's appropriate. Supporting invoices are there, that they make sense, that it's charged the right, reasonably charged to the right code. I'm not exactly up to speed on all codes, but I look at it and go, does that seem reasonable based on what it's charged to? And I go, yeah, it does. And then any voids, I look at voided checks or voided transactions to see, why was that voided? What was going on at the time? For payroll, I generally look at it, do an analysis, month to month, just is it reasonably the same from month to month? This time, I was able to get the payroll registers for November. I literally just looked at them to see, you know, are there, are there, you know, individuals, now I didn't see individuals' names because the staff are very good at taking out private information. But I can look at that by numbers and say, there's nothing unusual here, and nobody's making exorbitant amounts. So I just want to explain that that's, I do that every month. And so I'm looking at it, and I'm not seeing anything unusual. Not only that, we did have our audit completed. MMKR came in and presented the audit of financial statements to us. I asked more questions than probably anybody's asked before because I am an auditor. This is something I do. And so, you know, I was concerned about, you know, the audit process. Did our, did our staff cooperate appropriately? Were there any delays because of what we do on our, you know, our finance teams? And MMKR just praised our team, saying they did a wonderful job. We did have some findings that they had, which the staff have addressed and have written up their, you know, their responses to those and what they're going to do to change. I was very impressed with that, and I believe that under the leadership of Director Hennickens and Superintendent Stenbik, everything was provided, and they've done a very good job. And I just wanted to, everybody here on the board and those watching, that this is something that, you know, we have proven every month that there's integrity in these numbers and the integrity of the staff. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Julian. Thank you for your detailed monthly review of the financials. This is one of our board's areas, is the fiscal responsibility and the transparency. So thank you for helping us achieve that. Anything else, Julie?
Oh, no, that took me a little time.
All right, we'll move on to Jessica.
Sure, thank you. I had the opportunity, was it last week already, to attend the All District Band Festival and see a few other board members there. And it really was an amazing experience. I know as a parent attending, I have a sixth grader who's playing in the sixth grade band, and I was not really aware of what the All District Band Concert was about or the context of that until I was sitting at the board table and heard about really this being sort of the coming to fruition of the Save the Music rant. And so having that context and being able to go to the All District Band Concert and see all of our musicians playing together from all of our schools, from fifth grade all the way through high school, including playing a piece together, was really just incredible to watch. So my congratulations to everybody involved in that, all of our students, all of our families, all of our band teachers. That is not an easy feat to pull off, having fifth through 12th graders playing together in a single space. So that was really cool to see. I also attended, as all of you did, the joint meeting with city council and the school board. And I know that's a relatively new sort of annual meeting that we've put together and organized, and I find it to be just incredibly valuable. Many of us are involved deeply in the city and the events and the issues that our council is discussing, but we don't always get to see the connections between the work that the city council is doing and our school board and the work that we're doing. Being able to see the outcomes of our partnerships across, you know, parks and recreation and other offices of the city is really great. So I was really appreciative of that, and also kind of getting a sense of like, what's coming ahead for us? What do we kind of need to look out for as a board and have some conversations around knowing what is happening with the city? So that was great. I also attended the policy subcommittee prior to this meeting. I'm new to that committee. I know a couple of us are new to that committee. I'm very energized by the conversations that we've been having, particularly around ensuring that our equity statement is visible in our policies and thinking about how our policies need to be readable to our community, understandable to our community, and really kind of show our values in addition to, you know, compliance that a lot of people think policy is. So that's exciting. I did also, I was not able to attend live, but I did watch the recording of the legislative preview that the Association of Metropolitan School Districts put out, and that was really helpful again in thinking about connections between the discussions here at the board table, what we're hearing about experiences of our teachers and our staff and our students, and what's happening at the legislature and how we might influence those things. So that was really helpful, too. And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge that at the top of this meeting, we did have quite a few community members that spoke. And I just want to express my gratitude for them sharing their experiences with us. I think sometimes those things can be really hard to hear, but they're really important for us to know and to understand from the perspective of the students and the staff that are in those buildings. So I'm grateful for that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Laura?
I don't have much of a report here, but I do want to echo what Jessica was talking about as far as having all the stories told. It's very insightful to see common themes on areas that are of the greatest concern, you know, especially with some of the limited funding that we have and how we can focus where it's going to do the most good for most people. So I'm really grateful for everybody that came forward and has a voice, and I want them to continue speaking up and feel free to please continue talking with us. And on that note here, I also attended the joint meeting with the city council here in Columbia Heights, and it was very interesting to see how there were a lot of connections between what we do here at the school district, what the city is doing, and different ways that we can, we, different ways perhaps that we can work together in the future. And interesting about the different building opportunities that are going to happen in Columbia Heights and how that might affect our enrollment, even road changes, creating safer pathways to schools. There were a lot of topics that were discovered, and I look forward to having more conversations in the future. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Laura. Michelle?
Yes, so I attended the district-wide band concert as well. It was awesome. I have a fourth grader, so we're not quite at district band level, but it was, I was like, it was nice for her to be able to see, because they were going through and showing all of the different grades, either where they came from or where they could go. And so it was fun to see the fifth graders look over at the intermediate band and then look over at the high school band. So for her to see all of them, it was nice. And it was just a great concert. I expected mayhem, honestly, because there were so many students, but they worked well together, and it was just a great concert. I also attended the joint school board city council work session last week. Lots of great information and sharing of ideas. I feel like we collaborate with our city very well. I just look forward to more of that. There are certain decisions that they make or we make that affect the others as well as our community. So I really enjoyed being in that space. It was very open, and everyone was friendly. It was just a nice atmosphere to be in with like-minded people with, you know, aligned goals, trying to reach something. So that was a great meeting. I also attended North Park's first and second grade concert last week in creativity night. Again, I don't have students in that grade, but it is nice to see other grades and what they're doing. I don't want to lose track of what other grades are doing just because I'm only at one level. So it was really fun to see them do things that my child did already or, you know, where she was. So that was exciting to see all their art, and we participated in a couple of activities that they're going to be doing at the school. It was just a lot of fun. I also got to attend through Zoom the AMSD Legislative Preview as well. Lots of great information on what legislature is doing, and I feel like they are really trying to understand or, you know, almost there in understanding the funding and what we need and what we don't have. And I feel like that's a great first step to be taken because, you know, knowledge is power. I just feel like it's a great place to start. And I also volunteered at Snow Blast this past Saturday. It was more of a cold blast, which I didn't come up with that. I heard it from someone else, and I just liked it. But yeah, it was great because I helped out at the smores table, and they had an equitable forward-thinking. They had halal mushrooms, mushrooms, I keep saying mushrooms, marshmallows, so that our Muslim families or other families could partake in the smores. And so that was great because they loved them, and everybody kept coming by. And it was just such a good time, as cold as it was. It did get cold. But that was a great opportunity to meet some people and also collaborate with the city again because they were right next to us. So we kind of had people going in between us. So it was a great, great experience and fun. They had a lot of, they had pony rides and alpacas and a hayride. So people still showed up. It was great. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Mary?
Okay, well, thank you. I had a lot of meetings and phone calls. I met with Superintendent Stenbik. I had some phone calls with Lorian, with Superintendent Stenbik, with Director Maderas, several staff, students, and families. I exchanged messages with Representative Feist and Senator Kanesh as well. I was able to join the joint city council and school board meeting, which Julie was also in attendance. So she, you know, shout out for that. It was really, you know, as has already been said, it was really kind of wonderful. I think a lot of times I take for granted that all cities and school boards work together like this. They do not. So I'm really grateful for that. It also allowed me an opportunity to connect with Chief Austin about traffic concerns that we're seeing and witnessing outside of Valley View and CA. And I know that he had messaged back that he was going to meet with admin staff this week and try and work out a plan to see if we could make it a little bit more streamlined and safe for students and families and commuters who are traveling that area. Anytime between 7:30 and 8:30 is a crapshoot. So if you know, you know. If not, it's okay. Don't do it. I also attended the, no snow blast is what I was calling it, but it was a little bit too frosty for my seventh grader, so we were not there very long. I attended the AMSD Legislative Session Preview, and I kind of wish that we had more people still here to hear a little bit about it. One thing that I want everybody to know is that it was recorded and it is available for the public, and I highly recommend that people go and watch that. They had a really wonderful analogy that talked about the complicated hot mess that is school funding coming in from the federal and the state and the local levels. It's really a massive challenge, and I think that everybody there, both AMSD as well as the legislators that were present, all talked about it's incredibly complicated to do this. The analogy helped. They compared school budget to a family income and talked about the impact of where we get our funds, how we use them, and what happens with inflation and those sorts of things. Again, as somebody who's not really a numbers person per se, I'm more about feelings. It was helpful for me to see it laid out in that way. And then I think one thing that was really important from there that I pulled was even though we received a historic amount of aid, we lost revenue from the federal government. And after decades of underinvestment, that historic funding doesn't look as historic as it should, or as it, as it, it doesn't look like it can go as far, because it doesn't. And it is the continued underfundment, the continued cross-subsidy deficit. I hear a lot at this table over the past few years, and especially the last year or so, we've talked a lot about the increase in the EL cross-subsidy. What I don't hear as much is the fact that we still have a massive special education cross-subsidy deficit that continues. education cross subsidy deficit that continues. And that is, again, one of those, you know, we need to invest in that, and those students need to have resources, too. And we're doing the best we can. I think it was really helpful to see the legislators hear this, know this, and for school boards to sort of share that it's not, it's not just us. It's everybody's feeling that crunch. And so, again, I would really highly suggest that people go and look for that legislative session preview. It's at AMSD's website. So www.amsd.org/preview2024, the numbers. Again, it was really helpful to see it explained in a way that felt so, so manageable and easy. So.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. For my reports, like the others, I attended the joint city council and school board meeting. I really do appreciate this annual time for us to get together. My takeaway specifically were the conversations that we had on traffic and safe route to schools. As Laura mentioned, housing and new developments proposed for our area, as well as having conversations about the school resource officer program and our future conversations regarding that. I also attended the Tri-Metro All-Conference Music Festival. So kind of like the all district band, but this was all conference. So selected students from band, choir, and orchestra at, I believe, our 10 schools in our conference all spent the day learning together, practicing their music, and having conductors from Gus Davis, I believe, direct them after spending the day working together. So it was an incredible experience of music. It was great to see so many of our Hite students there performing. Makes me wish we had an orchestra. So if we can talk about that the next budget stuff. Okay, no, they're not looking. But it was a really, a really fun experience. The kids had a great time. Also, I spent a lot of time talking with all of you all this week. Conversations with Member Cool, Member Grandlin, Member Petway, and several conversations with Superintendent Stenvik. Excuse me. Next, we'll move on to our superintendent's report and correspondence.
All right. Thank you. I agree with what has been said about the all-district band concert, and there have been conversations about orchestra. But it really was, you know, like a dream come true in terms of all of those years that that we've been working with the Save the Music Foundation. So very much appreciated. I've been working with supporting Valley View with applying for a full-service community school grant through the Minnesota Department of Education. So over the last few years, Principal Coolman has been gearing up towards becoming a community school with wraparound supports for students and families, such as dental care, wellness checks, supplying meals, among other services for families, without the additional funding or the support in order to do that. And they want to do more. So the concept of a full-service community school emphasizes a component of collaborative decision-making with families, staff, and students. So if selected, Valley View would receive funds for three years. That would cover the cost of coordinating the community school activities along with supplies and needed transportation. I'm bringing this to the board this evening because one of the components of the grant application talks about governance. And so therefore, I'll be providing more detail to the board in your next update, and then also a possible resolution for the board, like a resolution of support later this month, I think would be helpful. So with more information for you. Speaking of resolutions and the collaboration that we're doing with the city in multiple ways, another resolution will be coming to the board later this month. It's a collaboration with the city, but also the the police department, and I've mentioned it before, that Be Smart for Kids program. And what that does is it raises awareness on gun safety and gun storage. In fact, on March 23rd, it's a Saturday, at the Columbia Heights Library, the city is hosting a Be Smart for Kids program event. And again, in your, in the board update, you'll get the flyer and information. We'll be sending more information out about that. But again, I will be sending a draft resolution. I just received it a couple of days ago from the Be Smart organization, and several schools in the metro area have signed on as well. So really important that we, you know, based, based on many of our experiences, that we that we support safe gun storage. Yesterday, Director Bennett and I met with the Teachers' Union President Nelson and discussed a personnel matter and also topics for upcoming labor management meetings. And as mentioned earlier, the AMSD legislative meeting preview was last week, and it was very informative, and I look forward to hearing from our local representatives that are here this evening. And since our last board meeting, I've had communication with all of the board members, including at the joint city council meeting. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Continue on our informational items. We have our legislative update. So thank you for sticking with us. We have our representatives, Representative Keagle, Representative Feist, and Senator Mary Kunesh. So I'd like to invite you all up to the front, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad that you are here, and we're very excited to have an update. Let you guys choose who would like to go first.
Well, I'm the one that's not on education. So, but I was really excited to hear about the Safe Streets stuff that you get, and active transportation.
Would you put the?
Yeah. I was really excited to hear about your Safe Streets, Active Transportation stuff that you're working on with Columbia Heights. That's been something that has been near and dear to me. And so having students and families raise up those issues around the safety on University Avenue and 65 here, Central Avenue, is really good. And I've been working a lot with the city and Department of Transportation to make sure that we can move around this community safely, by car, by bike, by foot, however we want to get around. And so I'd love to hear what kind of feedback you guys have on on what we can continue to do on that. And I'm just basically here to listen. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening. I am State Senator Mary Kunesh. I live here in New Brighton and represent the communities of St. Anthony Village, New Brighton, Columbia Heights and Hilltop, Spring Lake Park and Fridley. And I'm also the Chair of Education Finance in the Senate. So I have all kinds of numbers to share with you this evening. But I really did enjoy, well, I don't know that I enjoyed, but it was impactful, the voices of the teachers that we heard earlier tonight. Just last year is when I became the Chair of Education Finance in the Senate, and we really focused on the student voice and the teacher's voice, recognizing that, you know, that is the work that we are all, you know, those are the people that we are working kind of towards. And so their voices is always very important to hear and understand. We had an incredible session last session. We, in our, in our finance committee, we heard, we had a total of 34 committee hearings and heard 74 total bills. Over 25 students testified in front of our committee, which was just great. And we're hoping to have another student-led testify, hearing coming up. And I think we contacted you, the superintendent, and she's going to help us bring some students here in to hear those voices. And I know, Michelle, you, your daughter was there. She did an absolutely fabulous job. We invested, or we had a budget of $5.5 billion, which sounds incredibly generous from the taxpayers. But when we spread it out in the best way that we thought possible, we know it wasn't enough. But it was the best that we could do, and we will continue my, you know, you have my promise to continue to try to find the best way to use those dollars in the best way. Specifically, a couple of the things that I'd like to highlight are the fact that we passed early on a universal school meal funding so that there aren't any kids that that go hungry during school, the school day. So no costs for breakfast and no costs for lunch. We're hearing that there is a little kerfuffle if a kid just wants some milk. They can't just go get a carton of milk. You know, if they bring their own lunch and would like to have milk, that they really have to take a full lunch. And so we're going to try to fix that so that students who just want a carton of milk can just get a carton of milk. We did put in, increased the formula. So this year, there was a 4% increase in our funding, which was a total of $268.8 million. And then there'll be a 2% increase in that general fund or the formula for the 2025 year, and that's another $436 million increase. We are hearing loud and clear about the need to address the mental health issues of the students and the staff, and perhaps even all of you. But we did really try to make sure that we, we were going to do the best that we could with the funds that we got so that the schools could provide those services. So we secured $64.4 million for the next biennium, and then it'll jump up to $117.7 million in fiscal years 26 and 27 for student support personnel. And that is really with keeping in mind that those dollars should go towards the critical care of our students and the workers that do that. I understand there are all kinds of complications, especially when we don't have enough folks, professionals, to do that work. So maybe we're going to have to think outside the box about how we're going to get those, some kind of help for our students. One thing that was controversial last year, but I'm especially proud of, is the fact that Minnesota is the first state in our country to provide unemployment insurance for hourly workers. That was one thing, when I was a teacher, 25, I was a teacher of 25 years, and I saw the hard work that our paras, that our educational assistants, that our food service folks, that our bus drivers, our custodians, all those hourly workers put in, and then not to have some kind of security over the summertime. And so the legislature set aside, we created a separate budget line and put $138 million into that budget line for schools to draw from so that it wasn't a burden on their general fund or their their budgets. And we had the hope that that the schools would create, you know, additional summer programs or enhance the summer programs that they had, not only for our students so that they didn't get that, you know, go through that summer slide, but also to provide opportunity for their hourly workers to participate in that way. And the initial report is maybe about a third of that was was used in this last year. And we recognize that those dollars aren't going to last forever. They could last one more year. They could last two more years. And that is foremost on our mind, and and it is my, my hope that we find a way to sustain that funding so that it does not become a burden to the schools. So we'll continue to work on that. Another thing that I was especially so proud of is the investments or the the support that we are giving our libraries, our libraries across the state. Every one of our schools, school districts got a bump in their library aid. So we we budgeted $16.11 per student. That should be going towards library services. We, it would be, could be used for the, the salary. It could be used for equipment. It could be used for technology. We know that our schools have really struggled for years. Oftentimes, those libraries have been closed, and we want to open those libraries back up and and do it in a way that tries to support you all in the best way and that you can use those dollars in the best way. I hope you saw that article in the Star Tribune about a week ago with a library media specialist in Minneapolis who, when they reopened their library after having been closed, he, the quote was that "The books are flying off the shelf by the gazillion." And that just warms my heart. You can't even imagine. So we will continue to do that, to see how we can fund those those libraries around literacy, because it's so important. And it's not just our school libraries. It's our public libraries, our county libraries, our multi-type, our regional libraries that we we put those dollars towards. And then, just as we heard here tonight, it's so important that our students have teachers that can really relate to them. And so over the years, I have worked hard on increasing, on funding to increase teachers of color and indigenous. This past year, we were able to add another $38 million for Grow Your Own Grant expansion to increase the racial and ethnic diversity for our our teachers. And we put approximately $60, $60 million that'll go towards helping schools hire more teachers of color and American Indians, and especially to encourage them in the teacher shortage area. So I know I'm speaking a lot, but I'm just really, we did so much. There's just a lot to share with you and report to you. But specifically for Columbia Heights, and we heard those incredible stories about the large class sizes. And I know this community has had a huge influx of of immigrant families, and we can't thank you enough for providing a safe place, a nurturing place, and a comforting place, a place where kids can come during the day and the parents can do what they need to do, whether it's working or learning the language or trying to figure out how this world works over here. So we really want to thank you. And, you know, Columbia Heights itself received $3.4 million in the general formula. That student support aid, as I said, $103.3 thousand. That special education cross subsidy was an increase of $5 million. Your library aid specifically was $114.7 thousand. English learners, your revenue increases increased by $1.2 million. And I know that, you know, that's more than perhaps you've ever had, but we know that that bucket was pretty empty, and we are going to do our best to continue to work on that. The federal government has a huge responsibility here that they are not meeting, which is really what has caused that that cross subsidy. We can't make them pay up what they should, but our plan is to continue to increase those subsidies to at least 50% or more, just so that, again, so that burden isn't on our school districts. We know that transportation is extremely expensive. So the legislature increased transportation sparsity revenue by $9.8 million. And those dollars will go towards helping, of course, the the costs of transporting our kids. And we know that in rural Minnesota, it's a huge, huge burden. And we really want to work hard to make sure that that doesn't continue. I'm very excited to hear about your community school grant. I am a huge fan of that and the money that we were able to allocate towards that. Again, when we have communities that have really unique needs and families that are working hard, if we can provide those services at the school site for the community so that parents don't have to lose a day of work, kids don't have to lose a day of school, there's that continuity. I really believe that that is a model that will serve not only this community, but many other communities across the state. And so with that, that kind of completes my report. I am just very excited to go back into this next session. We won't have anything near what we were able to use this past session. But once again, we will look at the needs as carefully as we can. I can't, I'm not planning, you know, I'm not thinking that we will have a lot of dollars or there will be huge policy issues. Last year, we were able to create three different programs around ethnic studies, around civics, as well as financial literacy. And we know that these are things that take time and energy and staffing. And so this session, I'm hoping just to review the session, I'm hoping just to review the work that we've done, tweak the things that need to be tweaked, like the milk, and then try to maintain what we have already put in place and figure out how we are going to go forward next year, which is another budget year, and the year after that, to continue to support our schools in the best way possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, well, thanks, everyone. Representative Sandra Feist, I represent the B-side of our Senate district, that is the southern part of New Brighton, Columbia Heights, most of Columbia Heights, and St. Anthony, and I am on the Education Policy Committee in the House. So I also wanted to just start off saying that it was really powerful to hear the teachers speak, and I know all of you, I've gotten to know a lot of, or all of you, over my time in the legislature, and I know how much you care about the students here, and I know how much you care about the teachers, and I just, I know that you will be able to find a way forward that really honors the contributions the teachers made, and hears them, because the most direct investment we can make in our students is investing in our teachers. So I wanted to start off with that. And now I have a whole bunch of things that are very in the weeds. Senator Koenesch covered the high level, so I can just get really specific. So last session was an amazing session, we did so much, we had so much money to work with, and we prioritized education funding, because it is the most important thing that we can spend money on. And I say that as Vice Chair of Public Safety, where I also focus on kids, but schools and our students are the most important thing that we can invest in. So one of the bills that I carried was brought to me by students, and that was the bill to pay for and require schools to provide free menstrual products, because still, students should not miss school on a regular basis, because they cannot afford period products. So I'm super excited about that. It's a little thing, like in state budget terms, like $2 million a year is not much, but it's going to have a huge impact, and chronic absenteeism caused by students who have that period poverty costs a lot more than just paying for some tampons and pads. I also am very passionate about the compensatory revenue part of our education budget, and actually Senator Koenesch has heard me, like, I've changed my opinion since the last time we were at a school board meeting, so you can hear my evolution on this topic. So the compensatory revenue is a part of our education budget, it's about 8.1%. I think the most recent numbers are that, it was about $858 million, so it's a really huge amount of money. Ooh, you're going to correct me if I say anything wrong, because you're like a numbers person. But what it's supposed to do is target students who are underprepared to learn and not meeting academic standards, and we know that it's not reaching the, all of the students who should be generating this funding. One of the recent, relatively recent developments is that we're basing a lot of that funding on Medicaid direct certification, but that does not reach the same number of students across school districts. And Columbia Heights was one of the school districts where it actually was pretty under counting of that student population. And so over the last few years, I've worked with a lot of stakeholders and our nonpartisan staff on a new formula that would better identify those students, and it would prioritize ELL students in particular. I won't get too into the weeds, but it was a formula that I thought would be, and a lot of people thought, that it'll be easier for schools, you won't be like tied to these forms, and it would be more accurate in identifying those students and generating that revenue. There is a bill that will be introduced this year that will step back. So we went to universal meals, and all of a sudden, schools don't have that pressure to collect those free and reduced lunch forms, and that could like mean that the revenue plummets. And so we passed this like temporary hold, so that you wouldn't get less. And there's a bill this year that would make that permanent, and I say permanent in air quotes. And initially, I was like, no, we need like all this pressure, because we need to do better, because we are not like identifying the students that we need to identify to get this extra funding, and school districts like Columbia Heights in particular deserve this money. But I am convinced, for two reasons, that it's a good idea. It will avoid that possibility of a huge cliff, but it also, for reasons I truly don't understand, that are very mysterious to me, but apparently, if we do it this year, it's easier from a budgetary standpoint at the state level. And then the other thing is that school districts, populations of ELL students and students who are low income are always evolving, and so that pressure is going to remain, because those school districts that are having increasing levels of poverty, they're going to realize that if they're just held at where they were, like a couple of years ago, that they are really not getting the funding that they need to meet their student bodies' needs. So I am convinced that this is a smart thing to do, to be safe, but also that the pressure will continue, and I would urge all of you to continue to keep the pressure up, because we can do better. So that is something that I have been working on and will continue to work on this coming session. And then, something that I've talked with some of you about already, over the last session, one of my big projects as Vice Chair of Public Safety was to create an Office of Restorative Practices, and that is in the Department of Public Safety, and they will be administering, in my mind, a lot of money. In state budget terms, maybe not so much, but it's $8 million this two-year period, this biennium, and then $5 million per biennium on an ongoing basis. And schools and school districts will be eligible for those funding grants. So for programs that you have that are looking at restorative interventions, for kids who are disruptive, who are struggling, who need that extra level of support and accountability, you can apply for those grants. The Department of Public Safety keeps telling me they're just about to post that job opening for the director, and once they have a director, then they can give that money out, and that I expect to be imminent, but until we have a director of this office, you can all text me and say like, is there money yet? Can we apply for money yet? But I do really hope that Columbia Heights takes advantage of those grants, because I think they can be really helpful in freeing up other resources, so that you can have those really important supports for struggling and disruptive kids, and also have an amazing orchestra and choir and smaller class sizes. So feel free to reach out to me with any questions about that, I'm really passionate about it. This year, I talked about compensatory revenue, I am working with an amazing coalition of religious leaders and immigration advocates on a bill called the North Star Act, and that bill would prohibit data sharing and collaboration between state and local government entities, and ICE, for the sole reason of immigration enforcement. And so what that means is that if ICE came to schools and asked for information on students, that schools would not have to provide it, and I think that's very important, and I think it's important to the school body and the student population you serve. So stay tuned for that, but that's a really important bill. I am also working with ELL advocates on a bill that I connected Superintendent Stanbik with, to ensure that schools that have a really high population of ELL students have parents engaged in how they're providing programming, and it sounds like that could be super helpful here at Columbia Heights, and I know you do so much. I had a wonderful tour recently, so I know you're already doing so much to reach out to families of your ELL students, but this is an exciting opportunity to also look at ways that the state can support those efforts. So I know that, that I think is a work in progress, I don't expect it, I mean, like, maybe it'll pass this year, because it's amazing, but I think it's a conversation that we're starting this year. And then just mentioning support for the arts, it's, my colleague Maria Isa, Paris Vega, is, she's a rapper, and she's also a House member, and she's very cool, she's much cooler than the rest of us. I like sing jazz, and I was like, you're much cooler than me. But anyway, she's working really hard on a bill to support the arts, and I'm just so passionate about the arts, like, I know I wouldn't be who I am today if I wasn't like a super theater dork in school. So I'm really excited about that. The story, Bella's still here, she is still here, your choir story really resonated with me, because my daughter is 12, and she complains about how big her choir is all the time. So I hear you. She's in the Moundsview School District, but I just think making sure that we support the arts, like, it's just supporting like the soul and future of our children. I am working on two very, like, less, not, they're still exciting, they're exciting bills, about FAFSA and financial literacy. So I have a bill that would create universal FAFSA here in Minnesota. I think 13 other states have done this now, it's very, it's very nonpartisan. The first state to do it was like Louisiana, I think Mississippi has done it, Alabama has done it, California, New York, Illinois, like very different states. But what this does is it basically is a psychological thing, where students, instead of opting into completing the FAFSA, they basically can opt out. So it's very easy to not do the FAFSA and still graduate from high school, but it would create this like momentum towards completing FAFSA. The most recent data that I have shows that we left like $49 million in Pell Grants on the table, I think that was 2021 data, and in states that have passed universal FAFSA, they've seen that low-income students jump up by a significant percentage in how many of them go directly onto higher education. So there are so many things we can do to like get more equitable outcomes, and they mostly cost a ton of money, and this doesn't, and it can have like a really huge impact. So I'm super excited about it. And as part of that, I ended up like glomming on to a whole bunch of other people who are super excited about financial literacy, so we're working on that together as well, and that's just kind of a follow-up to legislation that passed last session. And then I'm doing like a whole charter school deep dive, which like will affect you all too, because I want it to be like everybody come to the table. Like, one of the things that Scott Kruenquist at AMSD was saying is that the whole point of charter schools, the whole concept, was that that would be a place to foster innovation and come up with new ideas, and that the school districts then don't get the benefit of that, because we're like, oh, like that worked, let's bring it back to our traditional district schools. And so it's part of a long journey, but I'm having a lot of good conversations just with traditional school districts, with charter schools, with parents' teachers, just to see, you know, what we might be able to do to like just bring charter schools into alignment with all of our goals as a state. And I'll leave it at that, but very excited to be here, you guys are awesome, I'm always inspired when I come here, so thank you.
Great, thank you. If I can open up to board members for questions? Anybody would like to start with a question?
I'm trying to figure out which one I want to start with.
Well, I have a question, everything was so, it was greatly explained, I feel like I just want to say thank you for being here. I appreciate all the work you do and for working with us, it means a lot, and I know you guys are very busy, so thanks for taking the time and for informing us of things. I've never been super politically savvy, right, so I've learned a lot since I've been on the school board, and I feel like having approachable, you know, people who are there, who I can ask questions to, I know I can ask a question and you'll answer me, it's meant a lot, because it's increased my understanding so much, and I just value your time and your knowledge and your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in and giving this update today, and I love the kind of that, you know, high view of what the plans are in different directions as far as, as helping us be able to negotiate a very complex project. Running a school district is not, it's not a simple thing, and there are a lot of pitfalls that have been put in our place on occasion, you know, unfunded mandates, and of course, the federal government's never lived up to their promise as far as the cross-subsidy, you know. And I also like the details, also. There are little, there are little things that can be done that don't cost a ton of money, that can really benefit the students, especially when it comes to equity, and I really appreciate the small things too, because I think those are going to actually have far more impact. So I just thank you very much, and I look forward to you coming again and giving us more updates on all the wonderful and cool stuff and new bills that are going to be coming up, so appreciate it.
Mary?
I just want to say, like, thank you all for being here. Senator Koenesch, when the, I had heard about the Valley View, hoped to get to a community school, and you were the first person I thought of, because I know that we've talked about that, and I've heard you very passionately discuss that for years, so I was incredibly excited, and I'm glad you could be here tonight to hear that as well. You know, thank you all, again, it is, it's so nice, and like I said earlier about our city council, not everybody has this opportunity and has such a great working relationship with our legislators, and I could not be more grateful for your advocacy and your availability and your tenacity in all of the things. It makes our job a little bit easier to know that we have allies and advocates at our state legislature. Representative Kegel, I am super excited to talk to you about 49th, so I'm going to email you. That's been a passion project of mine, as most people may know, for a number of years, and I would love to connect with you about that as well.
49th with the cross street, okay, and that's the one that, okay.
Yep, right in front of CA and Valley View there.
Lack of time.
Yeah, yeah.
We have four schools on 49th.
Yeah, we have four schools on one road, which I don't know that, I think we have talked about historically, that, I don't know that there's any place else in the state that has that exact setup, it's weird, but, you know, it's high, so we go with it.
Seems like a really good spot where we could do some Safe Roads to School innovation and figure out, you know.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep, we, yes, lots of stuff to come with that. You know, also Senator Koenesch, like books flying off the shelves when we reopened our library at CA, we heard the same thing, and we're seeing the same thing, so thank you so much for your continued investment and push with that. Representative Feist, you know, we had a wonderful meeting here as well a few weeks ago, where we had, we were bursting at the seams, and I think, you know, that dovetails very nicely, also with this idea of community schools. We do support not just our students, we support their families as well, knowing that coming to a new country where you don't speak the language can be incredibly hard, and you have to try and navigate all these things. And I will say that Superintendent Stanbik and her team have done a really good job of figuring out how to help all the families as much as we can. My kids were actually very impressed that she went to Ecuador by going down Central to go to the consulate, so she's, you know, doing a lot with that as well. And Representative Feist, the impact of your period poverty bill, I will just say, goes beyond just even our school. I did have a, someone at work mentioned to me that, did you know that you, they could give us, they could give us pads? No, and I was like, fun fact, I know who authored that. And so I just want you to know, that is also something that is, it's the little things that are big things, it's the milk, it's the, can we make sure that we, what can we do to help our kids get to school safe? How can we make sure that kids are not missing school for silly things like, you know, we don't have pads, like how can we help? And I think that that, your advocacy senior work at the legislature also helps us be able to support staff and students and families here, so thank you very, very much.
Well, it goes both ways.
Yeah, thank you. Julie?
Senator Koenesch, I'm kind of new to all of the funding and all that kind of works, but our district needs general funds, period. And when the state decides to hand us money and say, you have to use this for the library, we can't use that for teachers. Do you see what I'm saying? It's like, you guys restrict it, so then we can't use it where it's needed. Isn't there a way we can get a block grant or something down to organizations like us or cities like us that end up with high poverty rate, yes, but a totally different student class than maybe Moundsview or Fridley, or, you know, we have a lot of ELL students, and yes, we get the ELL percentage or whatever, but it's never enough to be able to provide for our teachers, who we want to pay, and we want to give the best of, as much as we can. But when the state restricts stuff to be, this is for transportation, this is for food, this is, when we had students that most of them would pay for their lunch, now we've got the state saying, we gave you all this money, but now we got to use it for food. So I'm just seeing like this discrepancy between what the state is giving us and what we really need. How does that change?
That is a good, that is a really good question. When we look at what it takes to fully fund a school, every single school, every single school district, every different community has different needs. Some school districts are able to provide the most incredible opportunities because of their tax base. Others have no business, it's, you know, agriculture, it's farmers, and they are struggling in all of those ways. And we recognize the fact that, you know, I'm sure every school would say, just give us the money and let us use it in whatever way that we can, but there are specific funds that we can't just, I mean, we can't throw everything But there are specific funds that we can't just, I mean, we can't throw everything into a general fund, especially like if these are matched dollars with the federal government. So, the food program is really mostly funded through the Department of Agriculture, and those are the dollars that come to us, and we're restricted in a lot of different ways to do that. When we talk about the library and the money that we allocate to the library, you have a school that now has an open library. I would say that's a win. There are a lot of schools, Minneapolis, when they heard about this funding, they committed to a .5 library media specialists in every building. Many buildings hadn't had one, hadn't had any library media specialists in years, and so to me, that's a win. That definitely is a win. And I know that there are school districts that are, that had library media specialists and are now using those dollars to pay for their, the salary for those library media specialists, and that frees up some of the money in their general fund. So, there are different ways to shift around money or use those in a different way, but when we, when we allocate certain dollars in certain ways, it could be because we're restricted, and those dollars have to be allocated in that way and used in that way. We want to be able to measure certain outcomes. If we put everything in there, how will we know if certain dollars are going to make a difference in whatever way that it is? I'm really familiar with the, or I understand the need to have unencumbered dollars to be able to put those dollars, and we're going to, we're going to continue to look for ways to increase our allocations to schools. I mean, this last year, I hope, was not a one-and-done kind of year. We're going to look at how we can be really sustainable, how we can use those dollars going forward. But you just have to realize that probably for the last two decades, Minnesota has not invested in our schools. They have actually divested in our schools, basically almost starving our school system to the point of destruction. And some people will say that was intentional, but, you know, I hope with me as the chair for education finance, a former teacher, our policy chair was a former teacher, our, in the House, the chair over there for education finance is a substitute teacher when she can. We are teachers that understand this in a way that perhaps other committees have not in the past, or chairs have not understood it, and are really committed to doing the best we can to get those funds to you in the best way possible. And at some point, if we're able to just dump money into a general fund, I would be really happy to do that. So, that's my long-winded answer.
One thing I'll add is, now that I've mastered the weirdness of compensatory revenue, I'm really interested in equalization. So, I feel like Mary is seeing my knowledge in real time, because like the last time I was like, "How does it work?" But I'm really interested in the issue of equalization and the way that the tax base impacts schools differently in terms of what they're able to afford for their students, because no matter where you live in the state of Minnesota, you should be able to afford, or not, you should have a quality, amazing education. So, I would love to see us tackle equalization. My understanding is it can be like up to like the tens of millions, or like, depending on how you do it, it can cost a lot of money.
Hundreds of millions.
Hundreds of millions, that's right. It can cost a lot of money, and so I think that's something that we should be looking at, like to the next budget year, but that requires like the deep thinking and the negotiating and conversations now, so just wanted to mention that.
Other questions?
I just have one other comment. Some of the, some of the school funding, the intention has been, and it's been very good, like equalization or compensatory, but it does tend to, it doesn't, it doesn't go exactly where it's needed. Some districts get a lot more than the districts that are really suffering. So, any assistance in reevaluating how those, like an equalization fund would be, would be applied to make sure it really does go where it's needed, especially in the districts that have a very low tax base. You know, it would be us, and of course, it would be greater Minnesota too, you know, unless they happen to have a nuclear power plant in their backyard, so, you know, but yeah, just really paying very, very, very close attention on how those funds are allocated. I would really appreciate it, but.
And I just want to make a comment. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here. We do appreciate your time. I also want to thank you all publicly for taking the time out of your very busy schedules and coming to do tours of our schools. Superintendent Stenwick and I really enjoyed showing you around and showing you what our great students and staff are doing, and also talking through some of the challenges that we have. When you were here last time, we brought up, you know, funding again, and this is something that we're going to continue to bring up. Do greatly appreciate the increased funding specifically for our cross-subsidy issues for special ed and for EL education. You guys got to hear kind of some of the challenges that we are, we're trying to work through, and each one of us on the board echoes what our student, what our teachers have said, and trying to provide the best education for our students and keeping great teachers, and we're challenged. Our board yet again passed a resolution directing the administration to find efficiencies, meaning looking for ways that we can cut, even after our voters here locally increased our operating levy from $309 to $827. We're still not there. It's still, we're still looking at creating efficiencies. I think the biggest thing I would like you guys to take away from me is continuing to work toward fully funding mandates. That is something that is just, it's so hard for us as a smaller district to keep up with the mandates, and I think Senator Koenesh, I really appreciate, you know, the work that you're doing on the unemployment for hourly workers. If that's not fully funded, that's going to crush us. We won't be, we can't sustain that. We can't provide the education we need to provide in the summer with that. And our cross subsidies still, even with this funding, we, our cross subsidy is total $5 million. So, our district of currently 3,400 students has a $4 million special education cross subsidy, and currently, not including all of the, our newcomers, a $1 million EL cross subsidy. So, you think about what our teachers have said today and what you had heard when they were here, and think about what we could do with $5 million. And I get, I know that that's a very clearly, you know, very federally, you know, related, but we, you know, I can't go to a teacher who is talking about, you know, 60 kids in a classroom and tell them to call their federal legislatures. I can't do that. They're looking to me for answers.
I do that.
Yes, and I will, but they're looking for me to fix it. They're looking for us to fix it. They're looking for us to provide what they need to do their jobs. So, we need the funding to do their jobs. We need our $5 million in cross subsidies. That, I cannot tell you what that would do to our district and what we would be able to achieve with that. Thank you for listening to my plug. Appreciate that.
You guys are lucky you have education experts.
Yes.
And street safety.
And street safety is huge with us, and I think, you know, the other thing that we talked about when, Julie talked about when she ran for the board, when I ran for the board, I talked about getting to school safely. And that isn't something that we have been able to achieve to meet my expectations, because our transportation costs continue to rise. I would love to be able to bus more of our students in Heights, and we can't, because we can't afford it. And right now, you know, we have a mile walk zone, basically, and I don't know if you've kind of been around, we don't have sidewalks in Heights.
And I would definitely suggest reaching out to the county board as well, because a lot of this, the funding for the Safe Streets and Active Transportation is going to the county. And you have to sometimes remind people that we are in Anoka County still down here.
Yeah, yep, and I think this was a great conversation that we had, and, you know, with our joint meeting with the city council, as we really talk about some of these things, and, you know, how do we get students to walk from six blocks away in the middle of winter, traditional winter, where there's snow on the ground?
Not in a town where you can wear shorts and t-shirts all over.
And cars that are parked on the side of the road, but are parked in the road, because the snowbanks are on the side of the road, and there's no sidewalk, so kids are walking to school down the middle of the street when it's dark out. And so, those are real safety concerns that we have, and again, one of the things that we can do is say, "Okay, you know, we're going to bus all of our students," but we can't, because the transportation costs are so high, and quite honestly, because there's not enough bus drivers either.
And it's not good for kids, you know? It's good to get out and walk.
Right, yeah.
Whatever I can do to help on that end, you know, feel free, I'm super annoying when it comes to MinDOT, I'm sure they see my name, and they're like, "Oh, great, what's she want again?" But that's how I get stuff done, and so, yeah, I would love to sit down and chat more about that.
Great, thank you. Anybody have anything else? Thank you so much for your time and for coming today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, we kept them waiting, but we've got our American Indian Education Parent Committee concurrence, and is Yolanda still on with us?
She is.
Oh, you're here in person. I thought you were going to be online. Great, welcome.
Hello, how are you today?
Good.
It's good to see you, everyone. That's not, well, it's going to look like that.
Okay.
Unless I can, that's what we're, that's fine, that's what it's going to look like.
Okay.
I'll try a different way. That's okay. All right, so this evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Yolanda Dorsois here, American Indian Specialist for the District. Oh, I have to do this in a different way. There we go. And of course, this evening, Yolanda is going to be presenting on American Indian Education Program here in Columbia Heights and our American Indian Parent Committee. So, I'll just do a quick introduction and pass it on over. So, our mission, of course, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner all along, all succeed, and the core values that are aligned to this presentation are community, collaboration, respect, and courage. In terms of governance, this is really governance for the American Indian Parent Committee, so this is information to the board, but there won't be a governance question, although it does require one signature. So, the committee already took governance action on January 10th. So, with that, I will pass it over to Yolanda. Hey, so according to the Minnesota Statute 124D.78, all Minnesota school districts and tribal schools with 10 or more American Indian students are required to have American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. School boards of the district must provide a maximum, the maximum involvement of parents and children enrolled in education programs, programs in elementary, secondary grades, special education programs, and supportive services. For our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, our AIPAC usually reviews our data for our American Indian students, test scores, enrollment, and proficiency, and we inform the district American Indian education programs and goals throughout the district to teachers, our superintendent, and our board here. We make recommendations to the district and the school board, and we vote annually on concurrence. So, this year was my first year here, so Val and Dave did a really great job keeping our program alive. When Dave passed away five years ago, Val took up being our Indian Education Advisor here, along with Superintendent Stanwick, did a really great job making sure that there was a firm foundation for that, for me to work with. For our students, we started out the school year with 87 American Indian students. Through the process of involvement into our communities, coming into the schools, being very active with our parents, we have now got our enrollment up to 93 students. So, that was very helpful. One of our students, Ella, spoke tonight, so I was very excited to hear her voice. I was in the back, and when I heard her little speech, I was, I was very proud of her and for standing up for her education and her music program. So, one thing that I like to make sure that I do is to meet all of my students face-to-face. And out of those 93, 93? Yeah, 93 students, 77 of our students are actively involved. And when I started creating goals for our program, one of my main things that I wanted to do was to make sure that each one of our students had three cultural-relevant engagements throughout the school year. We have successfully completed that goal already here in the end of the second semester. So, that was very, I was very proud of that. For our photos here, we have taken a field trip to the MIA, and there was a photography exhibit that we bring 13 of our family member, or well, our students and their family members to. That was very overwhelming, I think, for our senior class, because they have not previously been involved in these kind of, well, this particular trip. And then, we also are reaching out to our students for regalia makin' and getting them involved into our cultural dances for our end-of-the-year powwow. So, that was very special for us. We had 19 students involved in that, and six of our parents actually came into this room, and we take over and do a lot. This is Ella working the sewing machine. She made a beautiful dress, which she completed last week, and we, the students love it so much, they have requested more classes for us. So, that is really powerful as, in terms of gaining their identity. One of our classes we held here also was a medicinal teach-in class, so that they can learn how to take care of their souls. One of our speakers talked about, you know, that grabbing of those souls and making sure that they're healthy and supported, and that's my goal here at Heights, is to make sure that we connect that identity and that cultural piece to them, and in addition to our academic literacy and proficiency in math and science. So, that was really, this last two quarters were, was really a huge successful accomplishment that I felt for our students. I do, not only do I do academic goals for our students once a week, I do check-ins and advisory checks monthly with our students, with our high school students, so that I can keep them on task. We have successfully got all of our students to get their credits this year, or this semester. That was very hard work. We also do study hall at the high school and the middle school Tuesday and Wednesdays, so that we can give them extra time to get those things done before they go home and move on to their home lives. Our cultural groups, we do Thursdays and Fridays with our elementary kids, and we break that into kindergarten to third grade and third grade to fifth grade, and it has been a really great opportunity to, for community building, for our students to get to know one another and to connect with each other within the school system. I want to do more of that. We also do, had a night, a night event for our families, a Native American Heritage Night, where we invited a drum group in, and that was very powerful, and we invited all of our students from the school district, and we had elementary students and middle school students and high school students all coming together here in this room, and that was very powerful for us. This room almost feels like a second home for our group. We do everything in here, we share our meals here, and we, yeah, we come together and share our stories, and there's been laughter and tears and everything in this room, so we appreciate this space very much. And, yeah, so that, and we also are working on our curriculum. I have also been into our teachers, third grade, fifth grade, Valley View, North Park, Highland, and our teachers are very supportive, and I have other students, immigrant students who come into my office and are like, "Can I learn?" And I'm like, "Yes, come in, take a packet." You know, language exposure is one of my biggest work-ins this last, this last quarter. last quarter, is getting our students to say Ojibwe words. And, um, I was at Valley View doing a third grade storytelling and, well, because we didn't have snow, it was one of those things that we don't tell our stories without snow on the ground. And, um, that morning, there was a light, um, frost all over. And it was a really great connection of that environmental science and our storytelling coming into play with those kids. And they were like, I seen that, I seen that frost. And they were saying the words and they were getting into those stories. And it's, uh, very overwhelming to see students of every color come in, in every culture, come in and say, I love learning this and can you please come back? And the teachers are very open and trusting with my lessons and let me do what I, I feel comfortable doing. So I, I really appreciate this program. I appreciate our superintendent and her support and Stephanie with, um, her secretarial support. Um, I couldn't do this job without them. Um, as I was listening to, uh, Ella speak and the, uh, Ms. Sentinello speak, she is our social studies stu- teacher for the high school and she teaches our American Indian Education class. Um, I was, I was thinking about, um, her job, right? As, as, um, trying to teach Native American Studies as a non-Native American person to students who are, um, new to this country or don't speak English, right? And I think that is a very challenging thing for her. Um, I'm very happy that there is that, um, new grant that is coming out for Native American teachers. Um, I'm hoping, um, as the years go by and me being here, we can add staff to our program also. I would love to see, uh, staff, Native American staff member for our Native students at each one of our schools. I understand where we're at today, but we have big, huge goals for this program. And our students and our families at the Ameri- with our PAC are very vocal and, um, looking forward to add into our goals also. So, thank you very much. Um, so with that, our resolutions of concurrence for two thousand twenty-four, we, the American Indian Parent Committee Advisory Committee issue a vote of concurrence. We agree with the contents and implementations of the American Indian Program planned, plan and commit to evaluating the IEPP at the end of the school year to ensure that it is continuing to meet the needs of American Indian students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Yolanda. Your questions? Laura?
My favorite program ever, honestly. Honestly, um, when I first started on the board, we really didn't have very much involvement. We were part of a much larger group.
Yes.
Where we were sharing amongst several districts. So our, uh, parent came to me and, and said, you know, that, you know, that, that, that their, their children deserved to have this, it, you know, and, and we started looking at the program. Our previous superintendent did a complete evaluation and said we are falling short.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, my gosh. I, I am so excited to see what you're gonna do in the future. This is, this is what I was, I was hoping for, you know? And, um, and thank you so much for, um, for welcoming into your space, you know, other students so that we can, you know, so that they can also participate in the richness. Um, and, um, and make sure that nothing is ever lost.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Great. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Jessica.
Can I just add something to that?
Well, thank you so much for providing this incredible opportunity for our indigenous, um, students. We also did put a lot of dollars towards, um, Indian education in Minnesota. So we have now, uh, Indian Education for All. We, um, we increased the per pupil rate for this, this program as well as we, uh, allowed, we changed it to allow the dollars that were not, that are, that are allocated to our indigenous students, to our native kids. If there are dollars at the end of the year, that those dollars can be rolled over to the next year. And that hadn't been allowed before. And there are, again, some restrictions down the road, but recognizing that, um, there are situations where we would rather not have to, you, you all, to send those dollars back to the state because that's what you would have to do. Allowing those dollars to stay in the schools and then be used at the beginning of the next school year. And those, that, that, that came directly from educators such as yourselves who were, you know, kind of frustrated with the fact that those dollars weren't available when they needed them. And this was one way that we could do it. And so I'm really pleased to see and hear, um, what a great program and, and all the good work that you're doing here. And we do need to have more indigenous, uh, community members as, that are able to see themselves again reflected in the schools and know that those kids have that opportunity to learn the language. So there's language revitalization dollars as well. Um, and we, you know, this is something that I think we need to do for, for all of our language groups and all of our, um, community groups that are, uh, trying to keep their cultures, their languages, their practices alive. And I just think it really enriches our schools, not just for our students, but you're also talking about how the, the other teachers, the adults enjoyed it as well, so. Chi-migwich.
So one thing that you're, I wanted to touch on, um, there's also a new grant for after school, our, um, out of hour, out of school hours, um, cultural grant. And, um, we are putting that together. I don't know if we'll be able to make it in time for the deadline, but I just got that not too long ago. But, um, one thing that I do notice when I'm putting this grant together is, um, there are no Native American, uh, community, uh, projects or programs here in Columbia Heights, none. So this grant, um, would help not only our students, um, for after-school programs, but also, uh, community members for summer school programs. So there are four hundred hours that are, um, needed outside of school hours for that program. So that's one thing that we are looking at also to bring into our community.
Yep.
So thank you for that, too.
Yeah. Wapila.
Jessica?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to, uh, note how exciting it is to see all of the work that you've put into this program and how much it's expanded just in the last year.
Yes.
It's very clear to me, the passion that you have for what you do and in making connections with our students, with our families across the community. I've definitely seen you out at, like, all of these school events, talking to everybody. Um, and that's just really awesome to see. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, you mentioned you've got big goals for the program. I love big goals. The goals are great. So please continue to, to, um, share those here with us and, um, as we think about ways that we can continue to grow.
Thank you.
It's a very awesome program, so thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mary. Um, one thing, so sort of to piggyback a little bit, um, you said that you've had a lot of fun and a lot of success in tying in the language, so, um, not to put you on the spot, but how do we say, "Thank you"? An Ojibwe.
Migwich.
Migwich. That's what I, I thought, but I wanted to double check, so I didn't wanna...
Yep. Yep. And then another word that I like to teach our, our students as I'm leaving is we don't have a word for goodbye, so we say, um, Giga-wabamin. And that's how we say, "See you later" because there are no goodbyes in our language, so, and that's universal for Native American tribes, so, um, in our, in our language, Giga-wabamin.
Can you slow that down, Justin?
Yep. Giga-wabamin.
Giga-mabawin?
Giga...
Giga?
Wa...
Wa?
Ma...
Ma?
Bin.
There we go.
Giga-wabamin.
There we go.
Thank you. And then another great resource, if you wanna do, um, language learning, is the Minnesota People's Dictionary with the U of M. Um, that is one thing that I do, um, send to our students all the time because, uh, the Greater Fish and Wildlife Service has really great, um, cultural and, uh, language packets for, like, regalia and, um, uh, plants and animals and, uh, number systems. And, um, that's what I like to say is, uh, uh, language exposure. So a lot of the words are really heavy, but, uh, our high school students, they have access and, like, I tell them the link, I send them the link all the time so that they can go into that dictionary, put the word either in English or in Ojibwe, and it'll come up where they can click a listen button and an elder will say the word for them. So that's a really great resource to, um, connect to those pro- packets and programs and lessons that I'm giving the kids. And thank you. Yeah.
You brought in some.
Yes, in closing, I just wanna thank, um, Yolanda, of course, for all of the work that you're doing. Um, she's, what she's not saying is that she's an artist, she's a leader, you know, she's really, um, out there connecting and collaborating with the parents to generate a lot of these ideas. Um, and for example, um, we will be back to the board because the board approves overnight and out-of-state field trips. Um, so, um, Yolanda's looking at some of our high school students to do an overnight field trip up to the Malax Reservation where we will be welcomed to the community center, um, for three nights or so, two, three nights. Um, so that'll be back to the board, um, for governance in terms of our overnight field trips. So we're really excited about the, the funding for this particular program to be able to do that. Thanks.
Yes. That, that is, that's our end-of-the-year finale and our students are very excited about that. Um, so yeah, that would be a great, uh...
And our powwow, which is May thirty-first.
Yes.
At six P.M., under the lights in the stadium, right?
Yes, thank you for, for saying, 'cause I was gonna bring that up. Uh, everyone is welcome. So, um, well, we have Indian tacos and having a really great time. We are all set to go on that front. So we just need everybody to show up.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Migwich.
All right, next we have, um, Superintendent Stenvik with School Board Recognition Month.
Yes, thank you. Um, February is School Board Recognition Month, and I just wanna thank each of you for the work that you do. Um, you all have day jobs and family commitments and you dedicate several hours each month to provide governance for Columbia Heights Public Schools. Um, working in education is heart work or work stemming from the heart. And we have a very strong and cohesive school board. Each of you brings your individual strengths and your passions and your areas of expertise to complement the governance work of the board as a whole. Your time, effort, and decision-making positively impact not only the students we're currently serving, but will impact the future classes to come, um, along with families and really the entire community. Um, I just wanna express my deep gratitude to each of you and thank you for all you do. And there's a little token of appreciation for you, under the amount that's allowed. So thank you and just, you know, congratulations to all of you and on School Board Recognition Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Great segue as we move into action items. Um, so Superintendent Stenvik will present our, um, action item regarding building capacity.
Yes, as, um, the board was previously, um, provided with information around the, and the board, of course, monitors enrollment every single week. Um, so we all know that Columbia Academy is getting pretty full. Um, yes, yeah, Mary's there frequently and sees how full it is, so. Um, so of course, there's one legal mech- legal mechanism by which we can close to open enrollment, uh, meaning we will always be open to resident students. Um, we can legally close to open enrollment, um, when it's due to capacity. And we are nearing that capacity. Um, so of course, we, um, I, we're, I'm here this evening seeking, um, action by the board to close Columbia Academy to open enrollment, um, reserving some space in that capacity for resident students that would be enrolling. Um, and this would be effective for the remainder of this school year. And then, of course, as we do on a weekly basis, evaluate, um, evaluate that enrollment, um, in August, uh, before school starts to determine, um, whether the board, um, would like to maintain that closure or reopen. So it's all depending on our, our enrollment at that time. Thanks.
Perfect. Um, since this is an action item, we'll do the motion first and then have any discussion. Um, can I please get a motion to approve the closure of Columbia Academy to open enrollment for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year?
So moved.
Mary. Emphatically Mary. And a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Is there any discussion?
Um, yay. I'm very happy for this, um, for our staff, for our students, for our families. So I'm, I'm grateful for this.
Any other discussion? Michelle?
Um, I guess I have a question. So, uh, how is capacity determined? Is that, um, like us or a fire marshal?
Yeah, there's actually an, um, outside organization that does capacity studies of the building. So we're actually in the process right now of, of reviewing and re-analyzing the, the capacity across the district. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Perfect. Any other discussion?
Um, I had a similar question, just about how we determine building capacity. Um, and so I think it's, it's not necessarily, um, like, I don't think that this motion tonight is like, um, dependent on us having that information, but I think in the future it would be really helpful for us to, at least I would like to better understand how we look at capacity, um, because capacity of a building, I'm sure they're looking at several different factors as part of that. Um, and especially as we're gonna be doing a review, that would be really helpful. Um, but I guess, uh, the one, the one thing I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on is when we talk about building capacity and they're, they're, they're determining that or they're making those calculations, is, is staffing part of that calculation at all or it's based solely on, um, the, the space itself?
Uh, solely based on the space itself. That's what's in statute, um, not, you know, not the amount of staffing that we have or can, can or cannot find.
Right. And so then as the enrollment is fluctuating over the course of the year, you know, we've closed open enrollment at, at different grades and different buildings at different points of the year. Um, and, um, I know those motions are generally brought to us as a recommendation, and I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about how, um, how those recommendations come forward? Are you hearing that from, like, building principals are talking to you about, um, what, what, how their capacity is, is shifting and moving? I mean, I know you see the enrollment reports, but you're also kinda hearing from, right? Like, we don't necessarily have, do we have like a threshold where we're like, this is the number?
Yes, and we've met that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a percentage of the actual top-top capacity because we are required to leave room.
Right.
For resident students who are enrolling. So we can, we can, you know, reduce the, the threat, that threshold number to, to a certain capacity. I mean, we have historical precedence. Columbia Academy was closed to open enrollment for five years in a row, something like that. Um, so I've looked back at those, um, but no, it's not about, um, a principal asking for it. It's really, I mean, it's just, it's a legal mechanism and so we look at the number and trigger it that way. I did, of course, confer with Principal Burkus as...
Sure.
To, to inform him that we were, um, the board would be having this conversation and, um, the, the responses that I'm getting are relief.
Yeah. Right.
Another yay.
Yeah. Right. And you sort of predicted my, my next question, which was really around the, um, um, thinking about that threshold and making sure that we're reserving capacity, right, for our resident students? Because that's where we've, um, seen a lot of growth, right, is in resident students. Um, and so are you saying that we, like, that percentage, right, that we're reserving for resident students, that's something that we determine as a district or that's something that's also...
We are a lot, we are able to, to determine that as a district, yes.
Okay, so we can kind of...
And of course, Director Hennigan isn't here tonight to...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. And, and again, I think this is, this is information that, like, does not, this resolution's not dependent on that information. And I, I just think going forward now, since we, we close open enrollment at Valley View and I had some of those questions kinda come up in my mind, and now we're seeing it with Columbia Academy, we know that we might have some continued resident growth. And so I'm just trying to kinda put all those pieces together and understand. Yeah. What's in our control, what's not in our control? And how are we sort of making, I guess, predictions on, you know, what, what is our resident growth going to be at a particular school in order to make sure we're reserving, right, enough space for resident students? So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Great questions. Any other discussion? All right, here and then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Um, next, we are going to move into closed session. Um, for those people in the room, we do close the room. When we return from closed session, the only thing we will do is summarize the closed session and then do board topics and adjourn. So you're more than welcome to wait out in the hallway until we come back or, or not. So...
Zoom will be ending here at eight-thirty-two, so...
Okay. All right. So we will be... So we will be moving into closed session for the purpose of the superintendent's midyear evaluation. Can I get a motion to move into closed session?
I'll move.
Michelle, in a second? We're back, we're back. All right, so we were, we're returning to open session. We were closed for the purpose of the superintendent midyear evaluation. We determined that overall the goals are on track and that we appreciate the hard work and progress so far. Next in our agenda, or on our agenda, is board topics. Anybody have any board topics? All right, well, hearing none, we are going to adjourn at 8:53.